So we can start the school committee meeting for Tuesday, August 28th, 2018. I'll start by making a statement. Norfolk Public Schools offers a safe, joyful, and challenging learning environment that meets the needs of our diverse students. Through school, family, and community partnerships, we provide an education that inspires lifelong learners, cultivates caring and productive citizens for our ever-changing world. Let's start with a roll call.
Jennifer Nguyen here. Midora Champagne.
Jeff Curry.
Paul Cochran.
Angel Arrieta.
Okay. Let's start with public comment. There's no public to comment. Moving to our correspondence. And the correspondence that we have tonight is donations. And we have donations come in in fiscal year 18 for a total of, actually from Norfolk PTO. That totals $6,460.15. And from NCL charitable fund of $135. Fiscal year 19 donations from Action for Healthy Kids, $650. Sterling Associates Group, $200. Grand Total of $7,310.15. To make a motion, can someone make a motion to accept the donations?
I'll make a motion to accept the donations.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And thank you very much to Norfolk PTO and NCL and other donations that we've provided. They go a long way, especially in a very tight fiscal.
Absolutely.
Okay. Moving on, school committee chair report. NASC Mass Joint Conference Voting Delegate is also something we need to vote on.
Yep, so this is the conference that's sponsored by the Mass Association of School Committees in combination with the Mass Association Superintendent's Association. It's a conference that's held in November, and each district can identify a voting delegate to vote on any matters that come before the group at that time. So typically, we see if any member of the committee is planning to attend. In the past, Jeff Chalmers has attended, and so he's been the voting delegate for the district. I'm not sure if anybody's able to make the conference this year. The dates are at the top. It's, and the voting day is Friday, November 19th. November 9th, I'm sorry. Is there anybody that would be, is going to be available to attend?
I don't know at this point. I'm going to my professional conference, ASHA's, in Boston this year.
Okay.
But I think it's that week, but I don't know exactly what day I'm going yet.
I can go. Great. So do we want to recommend that they vote Midora as the voting delegate for the school committee?
Yes.
I make a nomination that Midora be our representative.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Midora.
Excellent. Thank you, Midora. Congratulations. Okay. Moving on to the superintendent report.
Okay, I have a bunch of different things for tonight. By policy, the school committee votes annually the new family handbook to approve. So you have a copy of the family handbook for 2018-19 in your packet. I'll highlight for you what some of the changes are from the past. We always update contact information. We do that annually. The other things that have changed are any policies that were updated or adopted by the committee over the course of last year. So there are some policies that have been updated. There are two policies that are going to be discussed tonight. So what we've put in the current handbook is the draft of the new policy. If the committee votes to approve them, then we'll send out the handbook with the most recent policy. If the committee votes to not approve those tonight, then we'll revert back to the old policies. So the policy for sexual harassment on page 47 is the new draft policy that you have in your packet to vote on tonight. The other is on page 67, and it's a revised dress code for the Freeman Kennedy that we'll also be looking at discussing and voting on tonight. Other than that, all the other policies in the book were updated and voted on by the school committee, and there aren't any other major changes to the family handbook.
So I'm naive to all this, but I did have a question, but I guess it's because it's already been voted upon, at a question about the discipline policy?
That was voted upon by the school committee last year.
Okay, so I can't bring it up.
And a lot of that was driven by state regulations and requirements for the new student discipline law.
Can I tell you my concern?
Yep.
Is that there's nowhere is it stated that recess cannot be used as punishment, and it just goes against so many guidelines with the CDC and, you know, Pediatric Journal of Pediatrics, that recess should not be taken away as a punishment. And I just wish it was, it says somewhere in here that it's frowned upon or discouraged.
Yeah.
And that, I just think it should be clearly that, and I know for a fact from hearing from other parents, that it is used as discipline to take away part of recess.
But that would be something that you would have to forward to the policy subcommittee to review in that policy, and they would have to bring forward any recommendations.
Okay.
We do discourage the use of resource. Sometimes, if there's a conflict that happens at resource, at recess time, it's appropriate.
Timeout, right.
So that's why the committee in the past has not put that in as an exclusionary, never allowed, because there are times when it is appropriate. But you can bring that.
Okay.
This was voted by the committee, so this is the current standing policy that's in the handbook.
How often, how often is that policy updated?
This one was just updated last year, and we do look at it.
On a regular basis?
Yeah.
Annually?
Not annually, but anytime there's any changes to the law or any issues that are brought forward, the policy committee will look at it.
I will email myself.
Okay.
We can.
And Jeff. We can put it on another agenda.
We can talk about getting on.
It's just something I just would like to hear feedback from.
Yeah, we'll include that on our list to review. Sounds like a good idea.
Great. So we need to have a motion to accept the family handbook as it is, or unless there's other changes to the policies as we consider this?
I do have a question. I don't think it's policy, but just the pickup procedures, is that something, can we vote on this and then review it together at some point?
Sure.
Specific to the Freeman Kennedy, I don't remember from years past, but I know there have been some changes recently.
There have been some changes recently.
If that's okay, I'd like to do that. Great. So I will make a motion to accept the family handbook?
Pending the approval of the two new policies.
Yep.
And a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Number one.
The next thing is just an update on the opening of schools today. So you have a handout that was given out today. Couldn't send it in advance to your packet because we didn't open until today. But overall, it was a very smooth opening. Our buses ran on time this morning. We had one bus that was about five minutes behind. Their typical schedule is bus 17. We do have a new driver to that route, and most of our buses in the first couple of days, people are taking pictures, and they run a little bit behind.
Was behind in the morning or the afternoon?
Both. I'll get to the afternoon rate in a second. So in the morning, it was about five minutes behind. Most of our kids were all in the building and back into classrooms by 10 past 9:00. We did have additional staff members available at both buildings to help kids find their classrooms, and we will continue to do that for the rest of this week, for the first week, until students are comfortable. At the HL of Day, our new kindergarten students visited today with parents toward the classrooms. We have a staggered start for kindergarten, so half of our students will start tomorrow and then half come on Thursday. The first time the full class is together will be next Wednesday. It also just helps the kids acclimate. There's this better teacher-student ratio, smaller group size, as they're getting used to the transition. As far as the staffing update, at this time, all of our professional teaching positions have been filled. We did do quite a bit of hiring over the summer, which I'll get to in a minute. We had, we're very fortunate, a lot of our paraprofessional staff that we hire are actually certified licensed teachers, and so after a year, they often leave us to take a teaching position in another district. So we'll talk about that, but we hired several people this summer. We have two positions that are still open. We have one instructional support position that we are interviewing for, and we have a lunchroom cafeteria monitor position for the HL of Day. We did send a Connect Ed out today and are continuing to recruit to fill those two positions. The SAC program is fully staffed. They are still looking for some high school students to provide support in the aftercare program, as well as a homework club leader, but they have sufficient staff to manage and operate with the appropriate ratios. As far as the building update, as you're all aware, we were expecting some high temperatures this week for the first couple of days of school. The Freeman School as a building is climate-controlled, so it's fairly comfortable throughout the day. We took a lot of steps in advance to do what we could at the HL of Day to make sure that it was as comfortable for our students as possible. So some of the things we did last night, when they were cleaning the buildings, we opened exterior windows. The temperature dropped down to about 70, so we brought in as much cool air from outside as possible. We also ran the air exchange system through the night to bring in additional cool air. Classroom teachers kept all their shades closed, lights off today, limited activity in motion as best they can. We have quite a few classrooms at the HL of Day that are air-conditioned, based on medical needs of students. So those classrooms kept doors open during the night to try to share the cool air that they had. And then during the day today, Ms. Mecklenburg and Linda Balfour circulated throughout the building. Classrooms that were excessively warm often went in for a snack break or stormed into one of the air-conditioned spaces. Matt Hafner and his team did an excellent job. They rented additional fans from ServiceMaster and two cooling units that we brought into the cafeteria. So we did the best that we could. We asked parents to send kids with water bottles and comfortably dressed. So we did manage to keep things as comfortable as possible throughout the day. And we will do the same tomorrow. Additionally, today, they covered the windows in the library that don't have shades and brought additional fans in for that space. That was one of the warmer spaces today. So we're doing the best that we can, and we did, Ms. Balfour did send a Connect Ed out message to all the parents at HL of Day where the heat is a concern, informing them of what we put in place today, and again, encouraging people to send kids with water bottles and dress for the weather tomorrow.
That's great.
So that's where we are in terms of the building. We did have one issue that happened at the end of the day after I sent this memo out to all of you, to the packets. So on the end of the day bus routes, most of our buses ran smoothly and on time. We do have one bus, bus 17. We had several complaints apparently over the course of last year. Most of our buses, actually all of our bus routes, reverse from the morning to the afternoon so that kids that are picked up first in the morning and have the longest ride are the first dropped off in the afternoon route. Assistant principals generally are the ones that get complaints about bus behavior, bus slips, or stops. So they had several complaints last year they shared with Holmes. Holmes did not want to adjust the routes during the course of the year because it's confusing for families when times change mid-year. We got several additional complaints this summer, and Ms. Mecklenburg worked with Holmes to take a look at the routes, and they did decide to reverse route 17. I found out this afternoon that a Connect Ed was not sent out to all parents on the bus, so some parents were not, some kids were later arriving in their afternoon stop than was expected. So we did send a Connect Ed out this evening, apologizing for that gap in communication, and we do expect the route time in the afternoon will get shorter, too. It is a brand-new driver, and so it left a little bit later, and the route was a little slower. So I do think those stops will get earlier over the next couple of days. Other than that, smooth opening, smooth start. Any questions?
That's great. So is that with respect to the bus 17, does that mean the kids that are getting on last are getting to, are getting dropped off first? Is it still less?
That's what it was last year. So the kids that were getting off last were also dropped off first and had the shortest ride both to and from school. Now it's reversed like all our other buses. So instead of leaving, they're going to be on the later end for drop-off so that the riding time is more equitable for all the kids.
Right. It's just.
It's just, exactly. Exactly. Okay.
Really no change. It's just a.
Yeah, a little bit later on the arrival, drop-off time for some families. Any questions on opening of school or staffing?
Great. Congratulations.
Yeah. Not so bad. We'll hope tomorrow's as smooth as today. The other issue we have to bring forward tonight, typically at our August meeting, we ask the school committee to re-vote a final budget. For planning purposes, we always budget M5 for any new open positions, but over the summer, as those positions are hired, we put in the actual salary for people. So it results in some shifts. So it accommodates any lane changes staff made, any reassignments of staff from building to building, new replacement staff. So we put the actual salary amounts in. This year also, the Department of Ed identified some new budget function codes for technology staff, so those were realigned to meet the new code requirements. One other thing that we changed in the budget, we had budgeted and planned last year for a .5 therapeutic teacher for our therapeutic program here. We've had some turnover in staff there, and what we decided to do, we have our school psychologist who's affiliated with that program, and we've decided, because she has a relationship with the students, that we will have her provide the social skills group instructions instead of a teacher, and we're going to replace the .5 school psychologist. So it's budget-neutral, it's just classified differently in the budget as the position. We have one less kindergarten aide than we expected because we went from seven to six classrooms, and we had waited as a district to see where we would reduce that additional classroom. We had to add a couple of special education aides. So there is an additional position in the budget this year for a special education aide that was unbudgeted. We had some additional circuit breaker funds, that's a reimbursement program from the state come in, at approximately $14,000. So the bottom-line budget is obviously the same. The savings that we saw in terms of staff and salary were used to fund the special education aide. So it's pretty much budget-neutral, but reclassified. So we asked the committee to re-vote the new approved budget.
I'll make a motion to approve the redone budget.
I'll second.
Great, all in favor?
Aye.
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 The next item is just an update. As the committee's aware, we worked hard over the past couple of years with the Rentham, Plainville, and King Philip Special Education Departments. We had a joint strategic planning committee last year, and this is just an update of the work that we did over the course of the year. We had two key goals. One was around social-emotional behavioral supports for students, and the other was around transition planning. So the memo that you received just outlined what the work was that was done last year. The social-emotional group spent a lot of time looking at all the resources, staffing arrangements, programs, tools being used in all of the therapeutic programs across the four districts. They spent time inventorying, and they did a gap analysis to see where are their redundancies, where are there differences among the group, and they used that to frame their goals for the coming year. Transition planning, we looked at better ways to streamline communication and keep real-time updates in terms of budget planning purposes of students with special educational needs, special staffing arrangements, and things like that. We developed a template for that. We are piloting a new process. Next year, one of the goals for the social-emotional committee is to establish a joint curriculum committee to look at social-emotional programming and health education across all four districts, and to identify a common curriculum plan. And in year two, for transition planning, we're going to be working on, again, streamlining that communication, developing a better sense for parents. We would like to do and publish a K-12, a pre-K-12 Special Education Program Guide, even though there's a transition to schools, so parents of entering pre-K can see what's available across the, all 12 years of education. So those are some goals for next year. We've decided for next year that we're going to work primarily in subcommittees with only three large committee meetings to kind of check in on progress. So we have subcommittees working on each of those goals.
Good.
Any questions on that?
Did any documents come out of the social-emotional committee? You said that they.
Yep, there is a comprehensive document that articulates, again, the staffing, the resources, the tools, the curriculum programs, and the gaps. That's a shared document that all four districts have access to. So that's the starting point that they're using.
Is that available on the website?
It is not a public document at this point.
Okay.
It's certainly something that I'm happy to share with the committee. If you want to take a look, there's nothing private about it. It's just a resource inventory.
Okay.
Thanks. Any other questions on the planning? All right, the next thing we have are just staffing changes. At our next meeting, I will bring some of our new administrative staff to introduce to the committee and give you a little more information on hires. We really have a very low turnover of staff. We have a really high retention rate. We did have several retirements last year. So we had Donna Anderson, a second-grade teacher, Sandy Bliss, Angela Parkinson, who are instructional assistants, and Judy Minusian, a speech therapist, who are retiring. Resignations, leaves of absence, and non-renewals. We do have a couple of people who have applied for leaves of absence for next year. We have most of the positions of people that are not returning to us again, as I mentioned. We had, we're fortunate to be able to hire licensed certified teachers as our paraprofessional staff. We do know that they bring a great skill and advantage to the district, but typically, they're also searching for long-term teaching opportunities. So we know there's a risk in that. So we have several people that have left for other positions. We do have, again, Jennifer Kelly, who was the assistant principal here, went to take a principalship. So most of, and we do have a couple of staff who moved and relocated over the summer. We have, we lose very few people to resignations, so we do have a few staff moving. Mark Peasey is moving from a technology integration teacher to the tech support position. We have Catherine Tully, who is an assistant with us, who has taken a position as a fifth grade teacher. Again, creating a vacancy somewhere else, but that's how it works. We have Kathleen Murphy White, as I mentioned, we're down from seven kindergartens to six, so she has moved into an open first-grade position. And we hired Betsy Hazel to take an open second-grade position. Arthur Duke was a sixth-grade teacher and has moved because of enrollment shifts to fifth grade. We're down to sixth grade, and we have an open fifth grade. And Raven Farrell, who was an assistant with us last year, has taken the permanent building substitute position at the HL of Day. On the back are lists, I guess there's still a couple of other people who have, we have Matt Malnrich here, who has taken the position as the assistant facilities director for the town. We have, one of our custodial staff members is now shifting to a shared custodial position, Brian Hagan. He'll be shared position with the town. We do have, let's see, we have Tracy Carlson went from a building substitute position to instructional assistant, and we have also one of our staff members that was on our substitute list, Brenda Ossinger, has taken an instructional position. We added that .5 position to support our growing ELL population last year in the budget. And then we did have to reduce, as per budget, the central office staff, and Rebecca Rita is now supporting SAC. A list of new hires, we hired a new assistant principal for the Freeman Kennedy, Victoria Saldana. I will invite her to our next school committee meeting so you can meet her. We're really excited to have her join us. She has a strong background in math and science education, was a math coach in Franklin, and also has completed her administrative internship there, so she brings a lot to the district. We have Tara Oliveto, who's our new building team chairperson. We hired several speech pathologists. As I said, we had a relocation and a retirement, so Allison Franco and Erica Anastas joined our team. The school psychologist, .5 is that new position, as I mentioned. We've moved our school psychologist to work part-time in the therapeutic program. We have a new custodial support here, and we have several paraprofessionals that joined our team. Cheryl Dittrich, Marissa Manson, Chris Lynn Belmont, and Rosemary Jones. Emily Fox is our new building substitute, and we have two new SAC staff members, Margaret McComber and Amy Braden. At the bottom, it says we had some additional hiring needs. We have filled two of the three instructional assistant positions. We are interviewing, we have a school adjustment counselor, Cheryl Lassie, was with us last year. She has taken an assistant principalship in Holliston, and so we are looking to replace that position as well. And then we still have the lunchroom monitor that we're looking for. Any questions on new staffing or hiring? Okay, I have Matt Hafner here, our director of facilities, to do an update of the facilities, and Matt Malnrich, and you guys have to come to the mic.
So we did a tour earlier of the facilities, so this might be repetitive, but compiled this, some of the highlights of what we've done over the past year. We started this building, and we went over the leaking stone caps. That's something we're going to be doing in-house to correct some failures and save some money. We're also, we went over the, say, 3M film. We're updating that to make the school a safer environment. We went over the gym floor issues, but that was something that we've taken on in-house to try to keep that floor in great shape and make it appear nicer, and unfortunately, it's having issues.
Matt, can you just, for the public, just talk about what the issues and concerns are with the gym floor?
So the gym floor, we resurface it annually. We take it down, we strip a few layers off, and we put on the proper coatings. We're having issues with the floor so warped, and there's so much moisture coming from underneath. The wood, it's ruining the surface of the wood, and it won't properly let, it won't let the finishes adhere properly. On top of that, it's also bowing and has dead spots, and it's pretty much been determined because the subfloor, whatever the vapor barrier is not doing its job, and it's letting the floor not perform as needed to be. So we're looking into, there's already been complaints from day one with the school committee and the building committee.
And the building committee did file a complaint within the warranty period on the gym floor, so we have to track that.
And so we're looking, because this is something we wait till, we've been doing this since I've been here. First year, we had good results. Second year, we had pretty good results. This year, we had disastrous results, and we brought in some professionals to see what was going on, and Mr. Malnrich put hours and hours and hours of labor into trying to straighten it out, to make it look as best as possible, but it's in trouble, so.
And I should just clarify, when he says disastrous results, Matt has a very, very high standard of perfection. So to the general public, it is not disastrous, but.
If you look at the floor from an overview, it looks, it appears to be beautiful, but when you look down and you see all the imperfections, and we strive to do it right and have it come out right, and don't like when it doesn't, and so we've been trying to take the steps. So no, it's not disastrous, it's not going to implode, but it's not desirable how it is, and it's a known issue.
It's nice.
And it's an extremely important floor to have, to be in good shape. We use that gym that probably gets used 12 hours a day from school to all the after-evening programs, after-school programs, and we really want that to be in tip-top shape, so it's disappointing, to say the least, how it's coming out.
It's an expensive, you know, part of our facility, and it should be what we paid for. I'm glad you're.
The vapor barrier, the same as the barrier that's used in the capstones? That's shrinking, so it's not like bad product.
No. Basically, when you put a slab in like that, you have to prepare the ground, the earth, you put a basin, then you put a vapor barrier in, then you pour the cement.
Yeah.
For a floor like this, you would put another type of barrier on top. That barrier on top is the issue.
Okay.
That's been from three different floor care professionals. The minute they see it, they all, and that's what they do for a living, and it makes sense when we knew that we've had issues from day one. So unfortunately, it's not dire, but it's not where we want it to be, and the amount of use it gets, we want it to be great, and we want it to always be marketable because that helps us out quite a bit. So we're working on trying to figure out a solution, because we don't get to play with that until the very end of summer, because it's used throughout the summer. So this is a stall got discovered within the last two weeks, because we had the time mark, we shut it down completely, and that never, we planned this week and realized we had issues, so that's why it's a brand-new Hot Topic, and we're going to work on seeing how we can have it resolved, to see if there's any recourse against the installation. So one thing that I'm really proud of, and something that's showing, is we have a lot of HVAC equipment throughout the buildings and throughout the town, and I was able to hire a person that, just every morning, his first thing is he logs into computers and he sees how this building's performing in the town library and town hall, and he goes over the HL of Day, because that doesn't have that kind of capability. And we're constantly maintaining equipment, which is going to, A, prolong, and B, make everybody happier, getting a lot less complaints. I figured, I didn't, I didn't receive one call today for this building, which is amazing. So we're doing the steps that we need to do to make our equipment last longer and be more dependable, and it's great because it makes my life a lot easier, but it's also, I'm very happy how that's working out, and it's working out throughout the town this way with this new position. And also, it's using him to do other work as well when we have some downtime, and so that's.
He also spent a good part of the day collecting and gathering and moving fans today at the HL of Day for us, so.
Yes, liberal with the HVAC designation with him, so yes, he was.
He helped us out a lot.
Yes, I had him in here this morning at 6:00 AM, trying to, we shut down some dampers to try to keep the outside air from coming in, to keep the cool air in, and it's been very beneficial to the town and to the schools to have the in-house staff, and everything's just working better, which is amazing.
It's great right now. Especially since you see a lot of other school districts canceling this week due Especially since you see a lot of other school districts canceling this week due to the heat, so it's nice that we're able to maintain.
Dr. Olardi's leadership, we've been really working hard and Mrs. Balfour coming up with plans on how to make it as comfortable as possible, coming up with how, thinking outside the box today, we were putting up paper over some of the windows just to try to keep some of the sunlight from beating in. We're doing everything that we can to make the experience as most comfortable as experience it is possible, but not great.
And there are a couple of other districts, we had a, we have a superintendent's listserv, and there are a couple of other districts canceling tonight, or closing early tomorrow, Walpole and Attleboro. But several of them have buildings that are older buildings that are two stories and are really struggling to keep the upstairs classrooms cool. So, every district has different resources and different challenges. Thank you.
We try to make sure learning is, do everything in our power to make it comfortable, so. Let's see. One thing that we worked with the technology department, we have Trish and her team have been doing a great job, and we've been able to get a lot of stuff done collaboratively, which is really great because we saved the district a lot of money by keeping everything in-house. One thing we did have to put out, though, this summer, was we did some key fob access points for door one to make a more secure entrance point. We also, we did door one, and we also did the interior door one. So, how the, there's actually, that best of you, there's three doors. When you first come in, you have the exterior, you have the principal's office, the main office area, and then you have the other doors. We now made it, because originally that was designed with one key fob and exterior, and how it was, you had a funnel into the office and you could have, gain access. We've now made it so you have a containment area, which is much more desirable for, you can, you know, for any issues with security, so.
So, it's now, it now mirrors the, what we have at the H.O.L. Day, and it's based on the advice of Synergy Solutions and consultants we've had in, you know, most critical incidents that happen in schools, the most problems occur in the first two minutes. So, the idea is to try to slow down anybody that was coming into the schools. So, now, if you buzz in from the main office at Freeman Kennedy, you're in a second containment area. You can't still get into the school, there's another camera, we have another visual screening, and people have to buzz a second time into the office before they have access. So, we have that at both buildings now.
We also did film in that area too, so we, we have a very secure entrance, and that's...
And for people that weren't on the tour, the film, we've put three-millimeter film on those doors at the front entrance, so that, again, makes the glass less penetrable in the containment area.
Pretty wild, you can, if you look it up, you can go on YouTube and watch the videos and...
It's almost impossible to get through.
It's not bulletproof, but it's going to take you a couple minutes to get through it, and that's what we're looking to do, so. And that was a pretty interesting project and a very expensive project, but all in student safety, so.
Sure.
But we also, with the tech team, we worked with my guys and the tech team. We had a lot of cameras in this building this year. They were installed and kind of, we used them, and they're limited capacity in some of them because they weren't gathering much information. So, we did an evaluation and tried to take some of the equipment that didn't really need an angle of a sidewalk outside and relocate it so we'd have some better coverage of the parking lot. We also did some in the interior of the building, we had some cameras that were just redundant. So, working with the tech team, my guys moved the cameras and they, we, basically, we modified what we had and didn't spend a dime, except for time, and we have a much better coverage now. There are still some areas we'd love to add more, but what we have now is much better. We just created a new records room, permanent records room, in the school. One thing in schools is there's never enough space. We do the shuffle. One thing we've tried to do now is we have a space that gets us up into the roof for all the roofed-up units and access, and we've made that, it was a storage room for the classroom, sixth grade teachers, classroom storage for their supplies. We've modified it all, we've made an actual storage room, so all the permanent records that we need to maintain on site will have some space, because right now, we have them off the cafeteria in a locked room, but we're looking to make a, another room, acquire lunch area space. So, we worked back, we came up with a pretty cool solution and we're proud of that, how that came out. Roxanne and the business office have a lot of file movement to do.
I was going to ask what the purpose was for a new luncheon area for students, but it's for quiet, for people that want quiet?
Yes, some of our students have difficulty managing a big cafeteria environment, so we have a smaller caf, right off the cafeteria, that can be used when kids need a quieter workspace or a quieter area.
And someone's obviously supervising them.
Absolutely, yeah.
Just to check.
Yeah, so, and the original intent of the room that we're opening up was a teacher's lunchroom, so there's a sink in there for hand washing, and it's a small area and it just wasn't a practical house, so it became a records room, and now it's going back to a...
That's great.
Let's see, we just completed, Matt just completed with the guys, the port-in-place rubber surface area here for the playground at this building, it's starting to show some of its age and it's starting to take damage relatively easy. We had a hole put in it and somebody decided to rip it up a little bit. So, we, again, we like to try to do everything in-house as much as possible, as long as we don't need a license to do it. We, or we do have certain licenses that we're allowed to do, but as long as it's not breaking rules, we like to try to keep it in-house and save the money and have pride in it. So, we've just patched the playground and, let's see. And I told you guys earlier, the HVAC server, we have everything working great, but the servers continues to fail. So, we have a new server, it's just a big changeover, and the tech team was busy this summer doing all the new technology. So, we're planning on doing a changeover pretty soon to make the system a little bit more stable. And the last thing that we're doing right now is, this building has a lightning protection system on it. Last year, for some weird reason, we had a lot of ice slides and they ripped off a lot of this, the anchor points. And we have some upgrades that need to happen to make the lightning system work properly as designed. We're taking it to a level to make it so it's back to the original design. We can go further if we so chose to, but we're not looking to do that at this time. Just want to make it sure that if we take a hit, all our stuff is protected. There's some great new stuff in lightning protection that we could do, but I don't think we really need to pursue chasing that right now. For this building, some of the ongoing issues, we had an amazing amount of sewage backups last year. We ended up becoming like sewage drain professional, clearing them out. We could, we had a lot of practice. We've been playing with different types of toilet papers and paper towels and trying to make more septic-friendly and pipe-friendly choices. And we also, because we were having so many call-ins, we bought our own drainage machine and now we can take care of most everything in-house. My guys loved seeing that thing come. I told you guys last year, one of my concerns is we have these, on all the permanent heating, there are little electronic zone valves that are failing. Still going around chasing them and checking, changing them with a better quality, but it's, and they're not under warranty. They have a year warranty on them. And the other thing that we're having problems are, is this building is filled with motion sensors for the lights, for the HVAC. Makes it help be green. The lighting ones are failing all over the place. So, just letting you know that we've been replacing a lot of those sensors in a couple of the classrooms, a couple of the offices that we bypassed them just because they were on the whole day anyway and they're a few hundred dollars to have installed. So, let's see, playground fencing. Beautiful playground, fence is lovely looking, it's not a good fit for what we have, for what we have students climbing on it. And you can't just have a monitor watching because it gets used every day of the week.
It's generally on weekends when we have big ball tournaments and things going on that we end up coming in and there's damage to the fence.
We, the thing, I can't tell you how many times I've yelled at kids after hours to stop stepping on the fence. I would love to replace that fence. It's a decorative fence, something that would be great in a front yard, but not for what we're using it for. Just letting you know, because we have, we get another piece that we've already repaired that we've tried to weld it in. So, ornamental, it's just not robust enough and it's just failing and we can't keep up with it. So, one of these days, if we have some extra money, I'd love to change parts of it at least and start replacing it as we have money. Maybe do one side at a time a year, but it's a problem. And one thing that we can't figure out, we've had a couple of different companies come in, is when our teacher runs the kiln, we set off the fire alarm. We've had the fire department here, we've had a couple HVAC companies here, we have positive flow going out, and for some unknown reason, we have an issue with that. So, figured I would share that issue. Don't quite know what to do with it. We have, we put in more fans, we put a larger fan in just to play with it, to see what was going on. Don't know why, what's happening, but we have a kiln that's a problem.
Where's the kiln?
It's in the art room upstairs. Has an oversized hood, it's supposed to take it all in. Again, we doubled the fans up to boost it to try to play with this thing, and I don't know why, it's bizarre.
And it's a new thi, it hasn't always done that, it's a new development?
Well, we, we have asked, so at the end of the year, we're asking the, our teacher to use different glazes and try, we've been trying to see if it's something that's going on.
Been ongoing.
It's bizarre.
We've had periodic issues with it over the years.
But it's...
More consistently about it.
So, figured I'd let you know. So, at the Olive Day now, for our improvements, we continue the upgrades on the burglar alarm throughout the building. A few years ago, when I came on, we found a lot of, there was a lot of problems with the burglar alarm. And so, one thing we tried to do is we replaced it. Since day one, we tried to replace it with the most economical way to do it that would be dependable. We were sold that a wireless system would work great in that building. We had some concerns, but they were squashed that with the technology that came out, it was going to work great. It hasn't. It's been very troubling. We've had the burglar alarm on and off sporadically throughout the year, trying to, things are not working, the wireless points. We've moved them all over the place, we've had a lot of, we've played with that a lot. It's becoming to the point where it might be beneficial just to put a whole new, hard-wired burglar system in there because we have so much technology in that building and student records. It's something that we want to keep locked and secured and made, you know, monitored.
So, I did ask Matt to pursue getting some quotes so we could look at the cost because there's a point where you continue to repair a system and we're putting money into something that's not efficient. And, you know, sometimes as we move forward, I wanted the committee to have numbers on so we could weigh in on what the best path forward would be.
How old is it?
It's two years old, and the company that pitched installed it, who installed it, they actually, we had them out here so many times on the warranty things and there's so many issues, they actually quit. They gave us a year warranty and they paid us to go away. They had another company come in, but they didn't pay us to go away. They, I gave us, agreed a amount of money to have another company who was more, that it was their main line that they reped, come in and they gave an estimate of what it would take to get the system working properly.
They shared the cost, they did share the cost with us of that.
And they, yes, they, they said, we, we've exhausted it, we've lost all our money and then some on this job. We can't, we can't continue to try to fix it because we don't know what we're doing at this point. So, that was a large company. So, we have another company coming in, and they came in and they thought they were going to be able to fix it, and they're still having problems. So, we spent an amazing amount of time trying to get it going and it's still, it's, it's...
The whole system was not a large expense. I mean, it was the most economical at the time. I think the full system was about $15,000 about. And then we did have the company refund a portion of the cost because they couldn't operate it. So, again, it's a matter of whether this continues to be the best path or whether we should look at... So, one of the issues, it's a concrete building, and so the Wi-Fi is not traveling the way that it was sold to us as it would throughout that building. We've added points, we've, we've made changes, and it's still, we're getting false alarms. It's just not as efficient as we would like. So, Matt will come back with information on that.
So, so I also put on there, continue chasing fire alarm deficiencies throughout the building, which I should address how I, I kind of, the building is 100% safe with a fire alarm. It gets annually tested, they hit the file state reports and it's all in the same, it's dependable, its life safety is good. Our issue is it fails quite often, it has, has false alarms often. If there was ever a fire, I feel 100% confident that it works fine. The problem is, is that it just constantly is having issues, which so means constantly paying invoices because you have to be a licensed fire alarm technician slash electrician to work on these things. And it's $120 an hour to constantly have come in. And usually doesn't happen during the day, which is a good thing, but it happens after hours or we have to put it quiet till after hours and then, then it becomes a four-hour minimum and then I have an $800 bill and it's, it happens all the time. So, it works, it's just temperamental, and it would be one of the things I would love to replace if we ever did a large investment in that building in the future.
Matt, do you know if there are any companies that put them together, like a burglar alarm, fire alarm, like in a bundle package?
And that's the problem, you actually don't want that. We have that here, because then it becomes a proprietary system and then it becomes even more money to have things fixed, and then you are limited to who can fix it. What we have here is, I won't say the name, but it's the same fire alarm, same burglar alarm. And as soon as I say it to anybody, they...
Not, okay.
So, I, what I, I found a company that has, it's like taking your car to a local mechanic. They have a lot of the codes, but they can't get into everything. So, generally, I can have the normal company that I deal with for the town, schools, deal with their trouble calls and do all the inspections, but they can't get in the high-level stuff, and that's the problem with doing the proprietary. And then especially if you have the burglar alarm tied into it because then they really own you.
I gotcha.
You're tied to, they, whenever they do it, they want you to do a service contract and then they, it doesn't cover anything and it's very pricey. So, we also, we did some repairs on the emergency generator. We have a diesel generator, original to the building, it was having some problems when it would run. It was shutting down with faults. We made some upgrades and the thing works great now. So, the biggest concern is not so much lighting, because we have emergency lighting in that building. It's more for food and stuff in the wintertime, for the pipe freezing. We have that going, working well now. The guys, we tried every year and it lasts for a couple of weeks, but we have the playground field at the Olive Day, which is very heavily used. And when you heavily use something, it fails. And so, we've done our third year of just going all out in that field, area the heck out of it. Seated it, fertilized it, did everything that we could, we kept it, we put a snow fence around it for the summertime to keep everybody off of it, because last year, we put caution tape and they drove their bicycles through it. And so, this year, we actually made a better barrier. Looks good right now, but that's going to be on forever. We could look into doing an astroturf field, but I don't think that's going to go well, but that's...
It's an ongoing maintenance.
Yes, we try our best to maintain it and it's just... Again, same thing with the HVAC. Mike, Eric goes there daily to check out the pneumatics and check out, make sure everything's performing. We're also doing all the service that you could ever want on these things and it's, it's showing. It's, it's, the equipment's very old, it doesn't hold us anything at this point beyond its normal life expectancy, but it's all working. And having somebody keep an eye on it and baby everything and it's definitely helping. We also, I didn't say that for the school, we have the facilities dude, which is the, it's preventive maintenance program, and it's also...
Help desk ticket.
It's, I'm sorry.
It's like a help desk ticket for maintenance.
It's like a help desk ticket. And also, we created a file for all the schools, or we created a portal for each school with all the different recommended preventive maintenance. So, we have reminders and we have, we get work orders. So, everybody's constantly looking at the systems that you kind of would forget about. So, my custodians, the beautiful dishwasher, they have certain weekly things they do and monthly things they do. And we have everything being assigned, so people aren't forgetting the stuff, and it's all, well, and... The other great part about it is we're using it to schedule the buildings now, which has created a much better, easier for everybody to use. Pam can attest to it because she gets to deal with all of the billing. It works out much easier having this system, this program that we use, so. Love having that, that makes life great. We created a safe space, which we showed most of you guys for the children over that...
You did a great job building that.
Yeah, great job, Matt.
It was really nice, good job.
Matt, we're very fortunate to have Matt, he's very talented. We also didn't show you, but I wish we had, I showed Jeff on the way out, we realized. We redid the playground, the courtyard playground, we redid the interior courtyard at the Olive Day. Wood furniture that was just dilapidated, rotted, and it was just kind of overgrown. And Ingrid asked us to make that a priority last year, so we went to town in there and my guys love doing these projects. And we trimmed trees, removed dead trees, and put in mulch beds, and Matt did all new surfaces for all the furniture out there. And it's great because we do these awesome projects and it's very low expense because we're just buying material and it's great. So, now...
It looks awesome, it's beautiful.
I love that space out there now, before, you've got to make no order, but now it's desirable to be out there. We, the summer, we worked a lot, we had major problems with the P.A. over that building. It was loud, quiet, didn't work, couldn't communicate back and forth. It's a life safety thing. So, we had... So we had the same head end unit, which is not a server like this building has, but the same system, the same phones, the same functions as this building does. So if we ever had a cross, if somebody, staff was, you know, either building can use the same system now because they know how it works. But we had every classroom tested, every back and forth works for teacher communication, the exterior works, everything works, which was a lot of work to get everything up to date and all working as designed. But it's, it's good now and it's, it came out great and we did a lot of work in-house to keep the cost down, to assist them and it worked out well. So some of the teachers aren't used to it, they're not happy because it's a little loud in their classrooms because it's been quiet for many years. So now they can really hear. So we're playing with some of the.
Settings.
Settings, but. We also took, we did five classrooms this year. We did carpeting over. So now we do not have any original carpeting left in that building because we were still running with a couple of classrooms with original carpet. Which is a, those are my guys because they maintained it that long. It's just, it was worn out, but it wasn't stained. It was in good shape and it was just 25, 26 year old carpet. So we've updated some of that. We also in-house again, this bed office, we have, they have their own heating and cooling in there now. They were a slave off of the front office. So when the front office would have AC going on, they would freeze and you have different people, different body temperatures, it was uncomfortable. So now they have their own system.
And they also work all through the summer.
Yes. So we put that in there so now they have supplemental heat too if it's cold in there, but they have AC. So now the main office isn't freezing themselves or being warm because the, it was a balancing issue which we would play with, but it wasn't designed to the way that it should have really been and it's, they had one thermostat and the conference room in the furthest area. So you couldn't really play with it to get it proper. So now everybody's much happier, which is good.
Good.
We also been doing some window unit ACs and it's not like a house where you just plug it in, we have to put a whole new electrical circuit and run everything in there. We went over, we got a grant for doing roof repairs. We're ended up using it to purchase windows for the light monitors, the turrets and the front cupola. And we're looking to gain funding for the roof from the, well, we have funding, we're working towards gaining funding from MSBA to do a new roof, which we have their approval. So right now, we're waiting for the next step. We're waiting on the MSBA to let us get a sign and start going to negotiations with their picked OPM and designer services. But we're gonna take the windows that we used for this grant to buy and have that included in the scope of work when that all happens. So we'll not only have a new roof, that'll be up to date with energy and insulation code. We'll also have the new windows, so it'll be a nice tight new above soffit system.
Excuse me, didn't part of the roof get replaced, I don't know, two years ago? Wasn't there a mass of, from the snow or something?
Small sections, but you.
Would, so would you still, I'm just thinking of my own house, like.
Yes, so here's, what they did is interior courtyard, two of the, two of the interior walls, roofs were replaced.
Yep.
And part of the others. That was a three tap shingle. It didn't, they blew it to insulation, it's not gonna make today's code. They made, they completely in 2017 changed all the, all the code. By doing that, it's much more stringent and that building is desperate need for proper insulation.
I gotcha.
So we wouldn't put a brand new system and not do the entire.
So the whole roof needs to be redone, okay.
Yes, and the worst culprit is the addition, which that's the newest part, but it's actually the worst insulated. And we have some flare images and like red images and it's, the building severely lacking insulation, which is, so that will be part of this scope of those work is to, in order to bring this up, you have to bring all the systems effective. So we're gonna, that building should be much more efficient. And with the MSBA, they also require to have the whole system balanced, all the HVAC and everything balanced and properly.
Calibrated.
Calibrated, so that'll also help. So ongoing issues, we talked about the fire alarm is costly, but it is definitely working 100%. And we have a major problem with there's no space in that building. We have shoehorns to close some of the storage closets because we don't have it. We actually have some classrooms in storage closets because we don't have any room. That building is at capacity, at maximum capacity. So we obviously know that we're looking at doing a space study over here because the facility over there won't support any growth of the layout because we're landlocked, how we can do it and the utilities would all have to be redone. But this building is new enough that a lot of stuff could still be retrofitted, I guess, and would accommodate expansion. District improvements, so we got this pretty cool system that we won a grant for last year. It goes in the back of a dump truck that I have. They share with us a lot of the stuff we do, we share with the town because we, I do both and we split the funding. We had a little bit of money into offsetting the grant. So we have brine spraying systems now so we can go and pre-treat the sidewalks so that way it's helping reduce slip and falls. And it also, you know, it just makes everything safer because you can treat the day before, you're not rushing to do it. You're using less product and the coverage is a thousand times better than the stuff we buy, the ice melt. Because as soon as you go with the snow blower, it pushes away and throws it in the woods and it's not great. This stuff bonds to whatever surface it is and it's great. The only thing that's not great about it is if it rains, it launches it all away. We also just invested this summer in the handheld carts that also spray this brine because it's so much, it's amazing. It's so much better to get excited about it because it's, coverage is, it's pretty cool stuff. Trying to keep it so we have less slip and falls because we're trying to keep everybody safe. We, again, we, the facilities dude, we've been able to track everything. You know, it's giving everybody, it's always like the, remembering to go out and empty a certain trash can. We have that so that way we don't forget it, we don't get a phone call. We have everything, we've been trying to build on it to make sure that we're not forgetting things and make us so human, you know, humans, we forget, we get busy and we have a constant record of reminders. So it's been great having that. The summer, we used some money and we bought some new floor stripping machines in this building because they just take a beating. We strip a lot of wax, strip a lot of floors. We've got a little bit larger, more efficient machines. We've also, as another safety issue is, we have panic buttons throughout the schools. We've implemented monthly testing because we've found a couple of times that we had some issues. We would only test them a few times a year, so now we have a strict regimen of doing monthly testing so that way we know if we ever needed to activate something, we know it's gonna work. We've also been continuing having my staff getting training. We have all but a new person and one other person, OSHA trained. They're changing it, so now municipalities have to be OSHA trained, they have to follow OSHA rules, which you didn't have to before. We continue doing like slip and falls, proper lifting. We're trying to keep all the staff educated and keep them from getting hurt. And the last thing, I'll stop talking, is we've, the feasibility study for the FK expansion. We've been putting a lot of work in as a district on that. We have some pretty neat drawings and it would be a beneficial project and a needed project, it looks like. But we're also, we're talking about sound for the neighbors. We've already addressed some of the concerns so that way we're talking about HVAC that wouldn't make noise like the current ones do and try to make it so it's more capable for neighbors to deal with it.
And we have some really nice preliminary design concept work that's been done. We have a couple of spaces that we are re-looking at that would be landlocked and not have exterior windows. So we're reallocating storage space versus classroom space. Once that's done, I will have a draft to bring to the committee. And once we make those final decisions, they will have their cost estimated or price out, an estimated construction cost that we can bring forward to the town for planning purposes. So I'll probably have that by the next meeting, I would think.
Oh, wow. Any questions for Matt? Pretty thorough. No, it's good.
The advisor board loves me. But no, overall, the schools are.
Good shape.
Really, I'm very lucky to have Matt. Matt's a brand new and we created a position, it was a cost neutral to the school department. We shifted, that's why you heard that we have a shared custodian. We were able to finagle. And Matt's been behind the scenes the whole time, working his behind off and making this building shine and.
And has also been able to help us bring in a lot of those contracted costs to do things in-house, like the courtyard and things like that.
Matt's just a wealth of knowledge and he's, he's awesome.
Are you available for like side jobs? Wow, he did the courtyard, the teak wood and something like.
It's really nice. You should definitely look at it.
He did the wall over there for the honor and we do all sorts of different things and we build furniture and stuff and keep it all in-house.
Very impressive.
It's great week.
It's fantastic.
My team loves taking on stuff and it makes their job more interesting. And I couldn't be prouder, I have a great team.
I have an idea for the HOD library. A Lego wall. Can we do that? If I take a picture of my friend's Lego wall in her library, her husband did it.
Well, that would have to.
I'd have to go through. I know, I have ideas. I know, I'm. I'll talk to Mr. Pal.
I'll defer to that question.
Might be a Makerspace idea too.
It's really cool.
How unfortunate. Ingrid is always supportive and it's great to, we address issues and it's, we don't put them on the back burner, we just deal with it and address it and don't, it's been good and it's not my third year and I.
Very proactive, as you can see, and it's a very high standard for how to maintain buildings, so.
The biggest test besides, I'm gonna stop one more. The fire department, the fire chief and the building commissioner have to walk and give us occupancy preference. And they used to spend, they would put three days, or two days for three schools. They would do King Philip Middle School because it's in the town. Now they can do both of our schools in less than a half a day.
That's awesome.
It's because we're addressing everything and the safety concerns are going away. We always, you're never gonna have a perfect one. We have a warped door at the Olive Day. We have a loose hinge, but we have.
Very few issues.
Yeah, so we're doing it. We're, you know, these kids are, I wish, I lived in this town, my kids came to school and they're, they're in great shape and we take pride in it.
Thank you.
Great stuff, Matt.
Thank you both.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Matt. Thank you, Matt.
I'm not sure Matt told Matt when you applied for the job, you had to come to school committee.
Yeah.
Only once a year, right?
Once a year.
All right.
Bye.
See ya. Thank you.
The last item I have under the superintendent report today is a proposal for a revised dress code for the Freeman Kennedy School. So this was an issue that we got some feedback from parents on last spring. And Lisa Altham Hickey worked with her site base council, which is made up of paraprofessional staff, related service providers and teachers across the grade levels to take a look at the current dress code and see how we could adjust, adjust it to be more appropriate. They did a lot of research. They looked at current practices, they looked at dress codes from other districts across the state. What they were really looking to do was to ensure that our dress code is consistent with our vision and helps to foster an appropriate educational environment, but that was free from, basically free from gender bias and not discriminatory in any way. So I think they did an excellent job. In your packet, you have a draft of the revised dress code. And I can read it if you want me to, but you can also take a look at it. It really focuses on an atmosphere of safety and respect. I don't think it's a very restrictive dress code in any way. It basically says kids need to wear clothes and shoes that are safe and appropriate for the age and weather conditions. It does say that diversity is respected, but students may not wear articles of clothing that could be considered offensive, disrespectful, discriminatory, unsafe or disruptive to the school learning environment, which is a pretty common criteria in most districts. Head coverings for religious reasons are permissible during warmer weather. This is the part of the dress code that was changed most significantly. Shorts and T-shirts are acceptable, however, midriffs and undergarments must be covered at all times. There's no short length, there's no strap length or anything like that. It just has general guidelines. And for student safety, all footwear should cover the entire foot. We have issues with kids coming in clogs and sandals, getting injured out on the playground, running around. So slippers, flip flops, athletic slides and shoes with a high heel are not permitted for school. Other than that, it just reminds parents, daily recess is an important part of the school program and kids should be, bring appropriate outerwear and that there are exceptions to the policy for special days, school, school spirit days, things like that. So this is to, before the committee for a vote to approve or discuss the new policy or the new draft policy.
I have no questions or comments. So I would like to make a motion to approve the revised dress code.
Second.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any further discussion or questions?
I think it's, I think they did a really nice job on it. So that will be included in the family handbook as it was approved tonight. And that's all I have. The committee reports.
Okay. Committee reports, King Philip, that'd be me. I had the opportunity to jump right in after being named the liaison for the June meeting and the primary topic of that meeting was to have the school committee select the new district.
Special ed director?
It's not special ed director, it's Director of Student Services. So they've changed the title a little bit to encompass a little bit more. The job description's been revamped and it was a very large turnout from interested parties with respect to that vote. And there was a lot of support given to one of the, one of the applicants, but it wasn't the superintendent's recommended candidate. So that, so the school committee did not approve the recommended candidate mainly because they wanted to get a little bit more information about the process and understand how that candidate came to be the recommended one from the new superintendent, Paul Zinni. So the, he and the committee that created the process developed a little bit more information, a little bit more in-depth and provide that to the rest of the school committee. We met again the week after and voted in his recommendation, Lisa Moy, who I must say is, has a very impressive resume. And in very, very good detail, Paul Zinni described the process as to how he chose her over other candidates and it made perfect sense and it was all but one voted for Lisa. So they have a new Director of Student Services now. Great. There was a, another meeting in July. Their typical July meeting was a retreat. I was not able to attend to do the work. And their August meeting was August 6th, I believe, and my wife was out of town and I could not make it as well. So that's, as far as an update, that's what I've got. Great. We'll be meeting again though next Tuesday evening. Okay, great. Thank you.
Policy has two. Do you want to speak to those or do you want me to?
Yeah, if you don't mind.
Sure. So per policy, the policy subcommittee has to review the bullying prevention policy annually and determine if any changes or adjustments need to be made. We did review the policy, there were no recommended changes to this policy at that, this time, so we need the full committee to vote to maintain the policy as, as it is.
We got a motion?
I'll make a motion to maintain the policy as it is, the bullying policy as it is.
And I'll second that.
And all in favor?
Aye.
The second policy is a revised policy for sexual harassment. The committee reviewed the recommended MASC policy. It's really not dramatically different from our current policy. It does identify and provide contact information for a grievance officer. That's one of the major changes. Overall, the remaining language is pretty consistent with the old policy. It's a little cleaner in terms of format than the old policy, but there aren't substantive changes to the policy. We are asking the committee to waive the required three readings and accept this policy tonight or take a vote to accept this policy tonight so that we can distribute it in the family handbook and to staff as, as we open schools.
I make a motion to waive the three readings and approve the sexual harassment policy tonight.
I'll second that motion.
Great. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We need to review the school committee meetings from June 12th.
School partner application.
Oh, sorry.
No problem.
Yes. School partner renewal applications for the Norfolk Lions. I apologize. So do we have a motion to approve?
I make a motion to accept the Norfolk Lions' application to renew the school partner.
I second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we'll need another motion to renew the application for our school partner, NCTV, which I think would be a good idea.
I'll make a motion to approve NCTV as the school partner.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, now on to the June 12th.
Here we go. I make a motion to accept the, the meeting minutes for the school committee meeting of June 12th, 2018.
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Very good. And our next school committee meeting is tentatively scheduled for September 11th. Does anybody have any problems with that or can we keep that date? Looks good to me.
It's fine, it's fine.
And we'll do policy subcommittee at six.
I might be a little late because my daisy troupe meets till 5:30.
Okay.
And I think that's okay. Can we meet at, instead of six for policy sub at, what time would be good? Six fifteen?
Yeah, six fifteen.
Six fifteen?
Sure. Thank you.
Please, thank you.
Matt, do I need to make this motion? I'd make a motion to move, to go into executive session to comply with the provisions of open meeting law and to discuss the reputation, character, physical condition or mental health of an individual and not to reconvene in open session and I need a vote.
You need a roll call.
Roll call.
Oh, Jennifer, when?
Midora Champagne.
Jeff Curry.
And Paul Cochran.